The June 1, 2020 virtual meeting of the Anaroddo County Council is now in session. Among other things this evening, we will hear and vote on several bills that were previously postponed due to the COVID-19 health crisis. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Puski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Rodvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
And Ms. Pickard, and Ms. Pickard is working on joining the meeting. So, Madam Auditor.
Present.
And Madam Legislative Counsel.
Present.
Okay, Madam Vice Chair, all are present except for Ms. Pickard, who will hopefully be joining us soon.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please pause for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This is Councilman Andrew Puski. I'd ask that everyone just listen in terms of words of reflection this evening, not an official prayer, but certainly appropriate. In these difficult times, I urge leaders at all levels to preach for justice and peace. Our nation can overcome adversity if we continue to strive for a more perfect union that generations before us fought for. Our democracy must continue to allow for peaceful ways to protest against injustice and inequality in our society. Our country now more than ever needs unity. We must all acknowledge and admit that there's racism and hatred in a way traditionally marginalized communities have been treated. There are many ways to advocate for change. Protests, elections, legal and policy changes are just a few. Let's start, though, by helping our neighbors who are struggling and do something positive for someone else and change attitudes that it's not about you or me, but it's about us. We all can do better. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
County attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. General provision, Article, Section 3-102.6. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gathering, as well as the governor's various executive orders limiting public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, and allowing written public comments to the legislation be filed with the clerk and considered by the council. The county Office of Law has opined that the public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public and therefore complies with the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next, it is my pleasure to present a citation to this year's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Emily Davis.
And Madam Vice Chair, I believe Ms. Corby is bringing her on. Yes, Ms. Davis is with us.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking the time.
I think all of our teachers are working so especially hard right now, and so it is truly a pleasure to be able to take this time, especially to celebrate you on your selection as the 2019-2020 Anaroddo County Public Schools Teacher of the Year. And I will just read the written paper citation that was presented to you, or if you haven't received it yet, it is on its way. And it says, "To Emily Davis, the Anaroddo County Council hereby recognizes your service to the students and families of Brooklyn Park Middle School and your recent award of the 2019-2020 Anaroddo County Public Schools Teacher of the Year Award. We applaud your dedication and commitment to the county students and thank you for your service."
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it, and I just wanted to say that I'm really looking forward to representing our ACPS amazing teachers, as well as serving as a voice for our incredibly hard-working students in this upcoming school year.
Thank you. I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job.
Thank you so much.
And I believe, now, Madam Secretary, should we wait for, or are we ready to proceed with the suspension of the rules? No?
I believe we're ready to proceed.
Okay. I'm very happy to have a script to read. As often as Ms. Pickard has read this, I haven't memorized it yet. Because this is a virtual meeting, we cannot be physically located in Annapolis, the county seat, and we cannot provide reasonable seating facilities for the news media. May I have a motion to suspend Rules 3-103 and 3-106?
Councilwoman Rodvian, so moved.
In a second?
Councilwoman Puski, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms., no, Ms. Pickard is not with us yet.
Aye.
Oh, we have Ms. Pickard. Okay.
I'm on the phone, but I don't have video at the moment.
Okay, let's finish this. I have six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to suspend Rules 3-103 and 3-106 is passed. Madam Chair, are you still working and need to focus on getting into the meeting all the way?
I think that would be wise for the moment. Yeah, thank you.
So, Madam Vice Chair, if you could continue for the moment until the chairman is fully integrated into the meeting. And...
My pleasure. In addition, we cannot provide reasonable seating for the public, and we cannot offer members of the public who wish to speak at invitation to the audience or on agenda items opportunities to testify directly before the county council. However, testimony has been received through our online testimony tool, has been reviewed by the council members, is posted online for the public to view, and counts of the submissions will be announced at the appropriate times. May I have a motion to suspend Rule 3-105?
Councilwoman Rodvian, so moved.
In a second?
Councilwoman Puski, second.
Thank you both. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to suspend Rule 3-105 is passed.
We will now open our invitation to audience. Oh, Ms. Stewart?
Oh, that's okay. Never mind.
Okay. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, we've had two submissions from invitation to audience of written testimony, which was shared with the council and was posted on the county council website.
Thank you. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Mr. Volkey? None? Okay. Then, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Rodvian, so moved.
Second? Okay. I think that was Rodvian, so moved, and Puski, second. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of May 18th, 20th, 22nd, and 26th of 2020.
May 18, 2020, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 7:00 PM. Ms. Hare gave the invocation, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar. May 20, 2020, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 9:00 AM. Ms. Lacy asked for a moment of silence to reflect on the proceedings, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar. Emergency meeting, May 22, 2020. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 9:00 AM. Ms. Pickard gave the invocation, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar. May 26, 2020, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 7:00 PM. Mr. Volkey shared a quote from the Declaration of Independence, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 18th, 20th, 22nd, and 26th, 2020? Ms. Rodvian, I saw you make the motion, but your sound was not on.
Councilwoman Rodvian, so moved. Sorry about that.
May I have a second?
Councilwoman Puski, second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The minutes of May 18th, 20th, 22nd, and 26th, 2020 stand approved as read. Yes, Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, I missed your cue when you were trying to tell me that I needed to do something, but I will be withdrawing resolution. I believe it is, I'm gonna get the number wrong.
Fifteen.
Fifteen dash twenty. Yeah, I'll be withdrawing that. So, I think this is the point where I do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 4420, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Classified Service, Exempt Service. Bill Number 4520, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Short-Term Residential Rentals. Bill Number 4620, An Ordinance Concerning Residential Rent Increases During a Catastrophic Health Emergency.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
We have no resolutions this evening.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1420 as amended.
Bill Number 1420, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget and Zoning, Commercial Revitalization Area Program, Designation of a Commercial Revitalization Area in Marley in Glen Burnie, Maryland.
Thank you. This is Councilwoman Pickard's bill. Ms. Pickard, do you have anything you'd like to say on this bill before we go to the administration?
Thank you, Ms. Hare. I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This is Allison Pickard, District 2. I believe this... Seven oh eight. I think it's been thoroughly discussed in our previous meetings, and I would just urge my colleagues for their support tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. And the administration, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the council. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is Ms. Lynn Miller from Office of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Keisha Hay from EDC, Economic Department Corporation, and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. I'll just echo what Madam Chair said. This bill's been discussed a couple of times. The administration supports. Happy to answer any questions. The experts that have just joined me are the people you should direct those questions to.
And are there any questions from the council? Seeing none at the moment, we will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We have not received any testimony for 1420.
Then, the public hearing on Bill Number 1420 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1420 as amended.
Alleges. Bill Number 1420, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget and Zoning, Commercial Revitalization Area Program, Designation of a Commercial Revitalization Area in Marley in Glen Burnie.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1420 as amended.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill Number 1420 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1620 as amended.
Bill Number 1620, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Residential Districts, Community-Based Assisted Living Facilities 1 and 2, Group Homes 1 and 2, Recovery Residences 1 and 2, and Rooming Houses.
And the sponsor of this bill is Mr. Volkey. Sir, do you wish to be recognized to speak?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Nathan Volkey. So, I don't have anything really to add to this bill right now, but there are some amendments coming, so I'll speak to those when we get there.
All right. And administration, anything to say now before we go to questions from the council?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table from Office of Planning and Zoning is Ms. Lori Rhodes from Office of Law, Mr. Greg Swain. In the virtual audience, we have Steve Kaiszegler from Office of Planning and Zoning, Adrian Meikler and Catherine Gray from Mental Health, and Pam Jordan, Sarah Stein, Joel Ridgeway, and Jennifer Jackson from Aging and Disabilities. If there are questions specific to those agencies, I'll echo Councilman Volkey's comments. The commission stated its position at the previous meeting. A package of amendments has been shared. We'll reserve comment until we see them. Or to the appropriate time, excuse me.
Very well. Do any of my colleagues have any questions at this time before the public hearing? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, we had fourteen submissions of written testimony on amended Bill 1620, which was shared with the council. Posted, and the council had received eighteen submissions. That came in late on the first reading of Bill 1620, prior to it being amended.
And with that, the public hearing on Bill Number 16-20 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1620 as amended.
Bill Number 1620, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Residential Districts, Community-Based Assisted Living Facilities 1 and 2, Group Homes 1 and 2, Recovery Residences 1 and 2, and Rooming Houses.
Is there any further discussion? All right. Well, I believe there are amendments to be offered. I believe the first one, amendment number two, is Ms. Pickard's amendment.
So, I will read the amendment in, and then we go for a motion to adopt.
Wonderful. Please proceed.
And we will wait for the amendment to come up on the screen. Amendment Number Two. This amendment allows a community-based assisted living facility 2 as a conditional use in RA residential districts.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, Councilwoman Rodvian.
Second?
Councilwoman Puski, second.
Is there any discussion on amendment number two?
This is Allison Pickard.
Okay, Ms. Pickard, the chairman is back, so I am assuming Ms. Lacy will hand the proverbial gavel back over to the chairman.
Okay.
And we thank you, Ms. Lacy, for stepping in.
My pleasure.
So, this is my amendment, and it came from a discussion from last week. Can y'all hear me? Okay, thank you. I apologize for my technical difficulties this evening, and thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair, for your diligence. This was brought up, brought to our attention last week, at the previous meeting, that it appeared to be an oversight that assisted living in the community, that those twos were left off of the RA category. So, this amendment just fixes that oversight in the drafting of the bill. I can't hear anything, so...
We're waiting on you, Ms. Madam Chair, to see if, what the admin's response is.
I'll take that as me being recognized. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration.
I can hear myself, but I can't hear anybody else. My apologies.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I can wait.
We'll give her a moment, and if needs must, we'll ask Ms. Lacy to step back in. Okay. I think at this point, we're gonna have to let Ms. Madam Chair get her audio fixed. So, Madam Vice Chair, if you would be willing to step back in. We are now at the point on amendment number two where the administration is giving us their feedback.
Mr. Barron, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. For the record, again, Pete Barron, as the sponsor of the amendment mentioned, I believe this was discussed at the hearing. It appeared to be an oversight. The administration has no objection, reserving our concerns on the bill as a whole.
Thank you. And is there any discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
And we'll see, Ms. Pickard? Can you hear us? I don't believe she can hear yet. Okay. We have six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's move to amendment number three.
I will wait for it to come up on the screen. Okay. Amendment Number Three. This amendment removes recovery residences 1 and 2 in their entirety from Bill 1620.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I understand Mr. Volkey is the sponsor of this amendment. Sir, do you wish to speak to the amendment?
Well, first, Madam Vice Chair, I would move that the amendment be adopted.
Oh, well, yes, that's important. I agree.
So, I'd make that move, too.
Is there a motion to adopt? That would be Mr. Volkey. Is there a second?
Second, Fiedler.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, this amendment comes out of discussions that I had with some of my colleagues and also some of the folks in the recovery community who felt that this bill was not adequately as drafted, taking into concern or taking into consideration all of the concerns that they had about their particular facilities and the way that they are operating. So, with that, after talking with the stakeholders from the recovery community, they have committed to me to do the following. They've committed to participate and be part of a work group that will look at these same issues as they relate to recovery homes with an eye toward coming back with a standalone bill that will address this and other issues that are prevalent and are necessary to be addressed in the recovery community. So, with that, I move forward with this amendment to ask that the recovery facilities be removed from this particular bill with the expectation that we will be coming back in the future with a subsequent piece of legislation to address these same issues and maybe some additional issues as well.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. And is there any discussion? Oh, Madam Pickard.
I'm back.
Madam Chair, this is all so confusing.
I'm so, I am so sorry. This has been really quite stressful, to be quite honest. I really want to thank the sponsor for bringing forth this amendment, and I look forward to working with the sponsor, with recovery, with the recovery home industry to tackle some of their concerns. So, I would urge my colleagues to support this amendment. And maybe we'll get through this amendment, and I'll take over being chair.
Any further discussion, or does the administration want to offer a comment?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Pete Barron, for the administration. I appreciate the sponsor's intent here. We have no objection to this amendment.
All right, last call for any discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number three.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler? Ms. Rodvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment number three is adopted. And just to note, Ms. Hare, your sound is very, very soft. And Mr. Volkey, your sound has been a little bit muted. Madam Chair, are you ready to resume chairmanship of the meeting?
I think so. Thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight. I believe there is amendment number four. Mr. Volkey, you have another amendment, sir?
I actually have two more, Madam Chair, and as we discussed, because of the successful passage of amendment three, I will withdraw amendment four, and we can move to amendment five.
Okay. Madam Secretary, can you proceed with putting up amendment number five? Madam Secretary, please read amendment number five.
Amendment number five, this amendment prohibits the application of Bill sixteen twenty to applications for grading permits, building permits, or zoning certificates of use filed on or before February eighteen, twenty twenty, for a group home that would be considered any of the uses defined in Bill sixteen twenty, an existing use with a group home license issued by the state and a group home or rooming house.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, Volkey.
And a second?
Second, Hare.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. Would you like to discuss?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and Volkey. So this is a grandfathering amendment, as we've done on a number of other pieces of legislation, where we are making changes to zoning rules, and there are individuals or entities that are already in the process of applying for permission from the county to do certain things. This will provide that, as of the date that this bill was introduced, that anyone who was in the pipeline will be governed by the rules as they existed at the time that they were in the pipeline. I also do want to make clear that although the, the explanation of the amendment only references group homes and rooming houses, I believe under section ten with the Roman numeral one, that it also applies to assisted living facilities, both one and two, as well as group homes one and two. So I just want to make sure that's clear to my colleagues, that this is not just about the group home facilities. This also covers the assisted living facilities as well. If I have that mistaken, I know someone will correct me, but that's my understanding of what this amendment does, that it creates a grandfathering provision for all applicants who were in the pipeline for these types of projects as of the date that this bill was introduced. So with that, I'd ask for support, and I think Ms. Schuet wants to add something.
Ms. Schuet?
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, when you were saying it applied to assisted living, you meant community-based assisted living, right, not?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this amendment? I also would like to thank the sponsor for bringing this amendment forward. This is, I think, the appropriate way to handle things like this. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number five.
Did the administration?
Oh.
Have feedback?
My apologies.
No worries.
Did you want to?
Madam Chair, Pete Barron for the administration. Yeah, as I think you mentioned, Madam Chair, grandfathering is an issue that this council has taken seriously. In fact, I believe we'll be talking about a bill later on the calendar relating to another grandfathering provision. With that, the administration reserves the right to, to make further comment. We got this amendment a little late. Appreciate the sponsor sharing it with us in, before the meeting. We, we have reviewed it. It looks fine, but the devil's always in the details with these things. So the administration is comfortable with this amendment as it stands now. But I, just warning you, Mr. Sponsor, Mr. Volkey, if, if I come back, it's because we did our homework.
Noted. So, Madam Secretary, is there any further discussion on amendment number five? Okay, we will proceed. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number five.
Ms. Lacy?
Hi.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler?
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment number five is adopted.
Thank you. Bill number sixteen twenty as amended will be heard on June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty dash twenty.
Bill number twenty twenty and ordinance concerning ethics conflicts of interest.
This is a county executive bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron for the administration. I'll ask Mr. Botseris from the Ethics, the Executive Director for the Ethics Commission, and Mr. Swain to remain. Bill twenty twenty revises the Ethics Code concerning employee representation of others before a unit of county government or in matters which the county has an interest, as long as the employee is not receiving contingent compensation. The purpose of the bill is to allow an employee to provide representation or assistance to third parties who are appearing before a county body or participating in a matter that which the county has an interest, provided the employee is not receiving contingent compensation. This will impact our volunteer members of boards and commissions who are treated as employees under county ethics rules. County employees are still subject to many other conflict provisions, including participation and recusal requirements, secondary employment prohibitions, prestige of office concerns, and use of confidential information. The bill will, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Botseris or Mr. Swain go in further detail, but this bill will mirror state law as it treats our volunteer members of boards and commissions. So with that, we ask for a favorable outcome on this.
Mr. Botseris, did you want to speak at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael Botseris, Executive Director, Ethics Commission. I just want to point out for the record that the commission did review this bill, and they did approve it. We also submitted a copy to the State Ethics Commission, which is required by law, and the State Ethics Commission approved it as well. So it is in compliance, and I don't have any further comment about it, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Botseris. Do we have any questions from the council on Bill twelve, twenty twenty? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first, I feel like I should give a big thank you to Councilwoman Pruski, who delivered additional flags to my house since my children destroyed the first ones that he sent out, which is why I was constantly raising my hand. So thank you, Councilwoman Pruski, for the additional delivery. I've hidden them from my children. On this one, Mr. Botseris, do I understand this correctly, that a member from, say, Planning and Zoning could represent an entity in front of the Board of Appeals? Or tell me why that can't happen under this bill?
Well, Councilwoman Hare, the representation would not be limited by that particular conflict of interest clause anymore, because assuming they were not doing it for contingent compensation, which I assume is what you mean. However, we still have several other conflict of interest provisions that it could come under. Each such conflict is going to have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, since this is a new provision. It's something we haven't dealt with before. We don't have any previous opinions on it before. I will tell you that the commission is going to construe it very narrowly, because it does have the potential for abuse if it's allowed to apply to regular full-time county employees without restriction. But I think there are sufficient other provisions in the Ethics Code that allow the, the commission to, to so limit its, its breach.
Okay, thank you. If I might ask one follow-up question. This is Jessica here, District Seven. I, I seem to remember way back at a work session where we discussed this bill, that we had discussed an alternative way to get around, to get about this intention with respect to the volunteer sort of boards and commissions. Is it your preference to do it this way, or did you have a preference to, to address this from a different angle?
Well, this is the administration's bill, so I don't think the commission has a preference one way or the other. You're right, there could be ways to limit it to simply boarding commission members and not to affect full-time county employees. That would require a simple amendment or rewriting the bill. That's not the way it was presented to us. That's not the way we presented it to the State Ethics Commission. Like I said, the County Ethics Commission did have some concern about it, but they felt that their concerns could be addressed through other provisions of the code. So that would be my comment on your question.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to make this point, it's sort of less of a question and more of a statement for people to consider. I think the point that Councilwoman Hare is hitting on is one that I followed up on and actually drafted an amendment. Unfortunately, we got it a little late over to the administration, so I know that they didn't have as much time to look at it as they would have liked. And I recognize that the county and the State Ethics Commission would have had to have reviewed the amendment before we got there. But the other way for doing this is simply to say that the term employee does not include a board or commission member, and then clarify that they can't accept any kind of a contingency fee for this, this type of representation. So I do think there's a relatively easier way to do this, and the concern I have with the way it's being drafted in this bill is that it creates more ambiguity than sort of it clears up, if you will. Because I think, as Mr. Botseris is saying, depending on the Ethics Commission will depend on how this is construed, so that the interpretation, not necessarily the law, is going to be the clear way to spell it out. And, and that worries me a bit about this particular provision. I would prefer to see that the law was explicitly clear on this as opposed to the commission. And, and although I believe that they will all act as, you know, in the best faith that they can and construe it as well as they can, I do think that we're creating some ambiguity here that we don't need to create. And if we were to go back and look at this again, I think there's an easier way to do this. So that's, that's my thought for this. And at the appropriate time, I'll probably make a motion to ask that we hold this, so that we can have a little more time for everyone to review the proposed amendment that we put together, because I think it may make more sense to do it that way than the way it's being proposed. But that's just some food for thought for my colleagues.
Ms. Fiedler, did you have a question? Oh, okay. Were there any other, Ms. Ms. Schuet?
I just have a few clarifying questions, and I also would like to point out that I do not have a yellow flag, Mr. Pruski. For as long as I've ever known, at least the last decade, probably a couple of decades, county employees have been prohibited from representing people for money, period. Is that your understanding, Mr. Botseris?
Yes, that's correct. That's the way it's always been.
Okay, so now, if they say Planner One in Planning and Zoning, or even somebody in inspections and Permits or Public Works, who's never worked on the particular matter, so they don't have any personal knowledge of what the matter is about, could conceivably be paid to represent a person before the Board of Appeals or before the hearing officer or whatever. Is that what, assuming, does that sound right?
There's certainly the potential for that to happen, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Barron, oh, Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I would make a motion to hold this bill for about thirty days until our July sixth, twenty twenty, meeting, so that we have an opportunity to review possible amendments to this bill and to see if we can get this right.
Mr. Volkey, Madam Chair, I believe, trying to see what the new expiration date on the bill is. You can give me one moment. I-
There shouldn't be an expiration date.
On the bill?
Due to our emergency status, correct?
Once the bill got back in play, then it was, all the bills, once they got, got back on the schedule and we set public hearings, the ninety-five days kicked back in, but it kicked back in from the point we took it up again. So I need to quickly-
Madam Secretary, would you like an answer?
I would love one. Thank you, Ms. Corby.
Bill twenty twenty's expiration date was extended to July thirty-first because of that executive order.
Thank you so much. As such, then, if it did get amended on the sixth, it would, it could come back at the very next meeting, but that would mean the Ethics Commission would not have its thirty days.
You mean to review the amended bill, Madam Chair, Madam Secretary?
Yes. If the bill was amended on July sixth, it could come back at the second meeting in July, because then we go into August recess, and it would, it could be done, but it would prevent the Ethics Commission from thirty days to review the amended bill.
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Mr. Botseris?
Yes. The technical requirement is that the Ethics Commission have thirty days to review and any bill and respond, however, and a practical matter, an amendment as short as this and that has already been considered, could be reviewed by the commission in very short order, probably three or four days.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As my motion has not been seconded, I'll withdraw my motion and then remake my motion to hold this bill until the June fifteenth meeting, as opposed to the July sixth meeting, in light of the concerns that have been raised.
So moved, Fiedler.
Madam Chair, I must, I apologize for interrupting the motion. I'm asking the question of, are we going to close the public hearing and hold the vote, or are we holding the public hearing? If I could get confirmation from the maker of the motion.
Mr. Volkey, would you like to clarify your motion, sir?
Sure. We can finish public hearing on the bill and then move the amendment. That's fine.
Then as such, if you could be so kind as to withdraw your motion and withdraw the second, we'll finish public hearing and then try again.
I'll withdraw my motion. Ms. Fiedler?
I withdraw my second.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill twenty dash twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from the members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one submission of written testimony, which was shared with the council, and it was posted on the council website.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The public hearing on Bill number twenty dash twenty is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty dash twenty.
Bill number twenty twenty and ordinance concerning ethics conflicts of, conflicts of interest.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now that we've concluded the public testimony on the bill, I would make my motion again to hold this bill until the fifteenth of June at our county council meeting then.
So moved, Fiedler.
Okay. Do we need, has it been moved and seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is going to be a long night. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote until June fifteenth on Bill number twenty dash twenty?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Barron?
Sorry to interrupt. I was just hoping to make a quick comment before the-
Sorry to interrupt. I was just hoping to make a quick comment before the vote.
Well, we kind of have a motion on the table.
Okay. That's what I get for being polite. I'll wait.
Ms. Lacy?
Hi.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Hi.
Ms. Feedler?
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 2020 to June 15 is adopted. It's passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will move along. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 21-20.
Bill Number 2120, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: User Occupancy Tax, Licenses, and Registrations: Short-Term Residential Units.
Mr. Barron, this is a county executive bill. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me will be Ms. McQuade from Finance, and Mr. Swain will be sticking around from Law. I will be requesting that the council also hold this bill. The bill was introduced March 2, and much like the previous bill, two days later, the governor declared a state of emergency. It became clear earlier today, when the administration was reviewing the testimony that had been submitted on the bill, that several stakeholders had not weighed in and were not aware of this bill's impact. The bill had been heard in a work session. However, the administration is not trying to sneak anything past anybody. Therefore, in the interest of creating good policy, fair play, and having a full examination of issues raised by this bill, I'm requesting the council hold this bill to the appropriate time to make sure that there's a full discussion on the merits, and stakeholders who are impacted have a chance to weigh in.
Is there any discussion from the council on this bill, 21-20?
And, Madam Chair, as we did advertise this bill, we must move along with public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that. I just wanted to know if there was any questions for the administration, as this is their bill. I'm not seeing any movement from my colleagues, so we can move along with the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public on Bill 20-20?
Bill 2120, we received one submission of written testimony, which we shared with the council and posted on the County Council website.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The public hearing on Bill Number 21-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 21-20.
Bill 2120, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: User Occupancy Tax, Licenses, and Registrations: Short-Term Residential Rentals.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Rodvian?
If this is the appropriate time, I would like to move to hold this bill until the date that the administration requested.
Madam Chair, I did not actually state a date, but I think we'd do the same as Mr. Volkey initially proposed for the other bill. So July 2, I think, was what we were shooting for. 6, 6. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Ms. Rodvian, in light of that comment, did you want to change your motion? Clarify your motion?
Yes, although I'd like to clarify something regarding our schedule before I, it is the 6th. Was the intent of the administration to have this in our July work session?
Yes. I would love to be able to discuss this at a work session. However, as Madam Secretary pointed out, if the bill should expire July 31. So I'm happy to have a full discussion at the hearing, and the administration will be prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. With that information, I move to hold this bill until July 6. Is there a second? Seeing no second, Madam Secretary will proceed with the roll call on Bill 2120.
Okay. Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Feedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
None in the affirmative, seven in the negative. Bill 2120 is defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please-
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 22-20.
Bill Number 2220, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Forest Conservation.
This is Mr. Volkey's bill. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would classify this as a relatively straightforward bill, but I know others may disagree. But effectively, what this does is codifies the position that was placed on the record by the Office of Planning and Zoning and the administration when we were moving through the legislative discussion on Bill 6819 last year, Forest Conservation Act. Can you hear me still?
Your audio is a little garbled.
Oh, okay. I'll keep talking. Hopefully you can hear me. With that, this bill, again, just makes it clear that for special exceptions, they are covered under the grandfathering provision. And I can't tell if anybody can hear me, so I'll go with that.
We can hear you, sir. Mr. Barron, did you want to respond?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron, from the administration, joining me at the virtual table, will be Councilman from the County Execs Office, Mr. Greg Swain from Office of Law, and I believe we will be bringing in Ms. Lori Rhodes from Planning and Zoning, but I could be mistaken in my notes on that one. Somebody from Planning and Zoning will be brought into the meeting. It looks like it's Mr. Stephen Kaiszegler. Apologies. So as the councilman stated, the sponsor of the bill, the administration stated on the record during the hearing on the grandfathering debate on the Forest Conservation Bill, that while the administration was opposed to the grandfathering, the scope of the grandfathering amendment that this council put forward, we would interpret the bill as the, that's Bill 6819, we would interpret that bill and that grandfathering provision as Bill 22-20 states. The administration has lived up to its word, and has interpreted the bill the same, in that fashion. And we would have no objection if the council decided it wanted to codify our current practice. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the sponsor of the administration regarding Bill Number 22-20? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public on Bill 22-20?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received four written submissions of testimony, which was shared with the council, and it was posted on the website.
Thank you. Public hearing on Bill Number 22-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 22-20.
Bill Number 2220, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Forest Conservation.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 22-20.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Feedler?
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill 2220 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 23-20.
Bill Number 2320, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Farm Breweries, and Wineries.
Ms. Hare is the sponsor of this bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I'll try and keep this pretty brief. You may all recall, this actually was an issue that came up last July, I believe, when there was an inconsistency between how we treat farm breweries and farm wineries in terms of access from roadways. And so I had first started looking, and just wanted to make them both say, you know, arterial or collector road. And I had introduced a bill and then actually withdrew it last July, because it came to my attention that it didn't put in place any consideration for a privately owned road, and there are certain areas in the county where that is an issue. So I worked very closely with Ms. Rhodes from Planning and Zoning. Thank you so much for all of your help on that. And I believe, actually, she even interfaced a bit with the AgroTourism Commission. I know Ms. Schuet has put in a lot of effort on this as well, and it's my understanding that everybody has come to a good place with it. So essentially, this creates the parity between farm wineries and farm brewery access, and creates a good balance between making sure that people can use their property the way that they would like to for farm breweries and farm wineries, while also giving a voice to those who may share a private road and need to have input into that. So with that, I ask that everyone vote in favor of the bill.
Mr. Barron, would the administration like to weigh in on Bill 23-20?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron, for the administration, joining me at the virtual table, is Ms. Lori Rhodes from Office of Planning and Zoning, and Mr. Swain from Office of Law. So as the county, as the council knows, the county executive does not have a direct financial interest in a winery. However, he does have an interest in a family land trust for which a winery is located on. So out of an abundance of caution, the administration will not be taking a position on this bill. We have directed the Office of Planning and Zoning to be brought to the table to give their impartial expert opinion. So with that, I turn it over to Ms. Rhodes.
Ms. Rhodes, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. This is Lori Rhodes, Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer for Planning and Zoning. As Councilwoman Hare indicated, I did provide some insight on this bill. It does exactly what she explained. It aligns the provisions between wineries and breweries to bring parity among those uses for access, clarifies what access means, because it can be misinterpreted, because in the code, we reference vehicular access. So direct vehicular access makes it more clear. She's going to be providing setbacks that are consistent with wineries, so I think it's a pretty simple bill going forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this time? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill 23-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from the public on Bill 23-20?
Yes, Madam Chair. We had two submissions of written testimony on Bill 2320, which was shared with the council and posted on the county website.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 23-20.
Bill Number 2320, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Farm Breweries, and Wineries.
Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none. I have, Ms. Hare, I have a note that there might be a technical amendment this evening on this bill?
Oh, yes. I do believe there is a technical amendment.
There is an amendment, yes.
Okay, great. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
I'll give it a moment. Amendment, Amendment Number One. This technical amendment conforms the purpose paragraph to the body of the bill.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Jessica Hare, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Volkey?
Is there any discussion?
This is Jessica Hare. It does exactly what it says. It adds the word wineries in where it was just omitted by slight error. My bad.
Sure. No problem. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Lacy?
Hi.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Hi.
Ms. Feedler?
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number One is passed.
We can go ahead and vote. Please call the roll on-
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Hi.
Ms. Feedler?
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 2320, as amended, is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any other business to be brought before the County Council at this time? Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask, I would like to ask our secretary to, Madam Secretary, to help me make a motion to reconsider our vote on Bill 21-20.
I believe, and Ms. Schuet can help me out if I'm speaking wrong here, I believe we have to make a motion to reconsider the vote, and I have to double-check to see if that is a majority or supermajority. And then after we make the motion to reconsider the vote, then we do the vote again. So if you-
Is there a mechanism to reconsider the hold on the vote, or is that-
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you repeat? Oh, 21-20.
Is there a mechanism to consider my motion to hold the vote?
I believe we voted on 21-20.
The bill itself is voted on, so I don't believe we can go back and redo the motion. Madam Parliament, chair, Ian?
Ms. Schuet?
No, you can't. The bill's now gone. It's been defeated. So the most you can do is reconsider the vote on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. I would like to motion, I would like to move to reconsider our vote on Bill 2120.
Is there a second?
Madam, Madam Parliament, chair, Ian, do you have- Madam, Madam Parliamentarian, do you happen to know offhand if that is a supermajority vote, or a regular majority vote? I'm going to be there any moment now. It's a simple majority. A simple majority? Yes.
The motion has to be seconded, so-
Yes. I just want to get clarity on the motion, so Ms. Rodvian is making a motion to reconsider the vote on Bill 2120?
Correct. I'm not seeing a second on this motion at this time, I think the bill stands as voted on. Mr. Volkey?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to recess, no, not recess, adjourn.
Adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Fiedler.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, the county council is adjourned until 9:00 AM Friday, June 5, 2020, and again, thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for taking over the beginning of the meeting. Hopefully, we will not have any more technical difficulties on Friday morning. Have a great day.